Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the January 17th, 2023 regular City Council meeting to order. Let the record reflect that all members of the council are present. Votes this evening will be recorded using the city's electronic voting system. Tonight's invocation will be provided by Chaplain John Siou of the Orange County Sheriff's Department. Thank you very much for being here tonight.
And as I open this evening's meeting, anyone would like to join in their own faith tradition and pray along with me? I welcome you to do that. Father, known by many names, Spirit of life, Spirit of love, Spirit of community, Spirit of justice, we ask your blessings on the people who have been called to lead this community in which we live and work and play. Help them as leaders to not ask first, "How do we fix this?", but what do we need to learn? How might we need to change? And to whom do we need to listen? Remind them, because we all forget from time to time, especially in the noisiness of what passes for political debate today, that they are not only leaders, but also servants, and that it is their responsibility and ours to serve the common good of all. Remind them that no matter where we live, everyone, no matter their ethnic, religious, or political beliefs, is our neighbor, our sibling, and that throughout the ages, the leaders of the people are called to respect and protect the least of those among us: our children, the elderly, the poor, those who are hungry, those who have no homes, those who are ill in body, mind, or spirit, and strangers in our midst; those who live on the margins; those who are alone; those who are forgotten. Grant them and us the wisdom and courage to know and do what is right and good and true. May they and we speak out when it is time to speak out and to listen patiently and receptively when it is time to listen. May they and we always be guided by the Spirit of community, by the Spirit of justice, and by the Spirit of love. This we pray in the name all that we hold sacred and holy, all we hold good and true and right.
Thank you, Chaplain Siou. The Pledge of Allegiance tonight to the flag of our country will be led by Councilmember Voits at this time. I'd like to ask everyone to please stand.
Please join me while we pledge our allegiance to the greatest symbol of freedom in the world.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Starting off tonight, Madam Clerk, could you please read the title of our first presentation?
Certainly, Mr. Mayor. Our first presentation is New Employee Introductions.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the presentation?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, we'll vote now. Aye. We're doing electronic voting tonight, then? Yes, okay.
That motion passes unanimously?
Thank you. Very good. Madam City Manager, could you please introduce this item for our presentation?
Thank you, Mayor. Providing our presentation tonight is our Deputy City Manager Brett Channing.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. Yes, I'd like to introduce our new, one of our newest employees, Winston Karuga. Winston, if you could stand up. There he is. He is our new code enforcement officer. Winston comes to us from the city of Costa Mesa, where he was also a code enforcement officer, and has a lot of experience working very complex cases regarding sober living homes, illegal marijuana dispensary, and other zoning violations. Fun fact about Winston, he was born in Kenya and then moved to England as a child, and he attended Leicester de Montfort University, I think I said that right, where he got his degree in housing regeneration and sustainable communities. So we'd like to welcome Winston here to City Lake Forest.
Welcome aboard, Winston. Glad to have you with us. Thanks for coming tonight and allow us just to have an opportunity to have you introduce yourself to us, and we're thankful for what you're going to be able to do in serving our community. Thank you very much. Madam City Clerk, have we received any requests to speak on this item?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Andrew O'Connor. Mr. O'Connor?
Andrew O'Connor, Foothill Ranch in Winston. Welcome to the city of Lake Forest. I'm sure you'll do a good job. Your main focus being unpermitted sober living houses. How many of these exist in the city, do we know, Mayor? Why has this become a problem? Does anybody know? City Attorney, City Manager? Illegal marijuana dispensaries. Ever since Voits, desperately, desperately, and he took $5,000 for Sunstar Labs so they could get a marijuana testing facility in the city. The issue of marijuana has gotten out of control. How does Voits feel about creating Lake Forest ground zero for illegal marijuana dispensaries? He lit the fuse, Voits, good job. Voits himself in the die says he smokes marijuana. At March 2020, ordinance 331 passed by a three-to-two vote. About a year later, on March 16th, 2021, the council discussed the repeal of ordinance 331, item 19. Mayor Voits, at that time, motioned to table the item indefinitely with no established date to bring the matter back for more discussion. The motion died for lack of a second. Once Voits realized that there was no support for any of his colleagues, he capitulated and he voted to repair the necessary paperwork to repeal ordinance 331, a five-to-zero vote. On June 1st, 2021, item 11 was a discussion over the repeal. At the one hour, 16 minute, 25 second timestamp, Voits said, "Our youth and many of our senior citizens are using it." How do you know that? How do you know to make that statement? Voits added a disclaimer that he doesn't touch the stuff. Since he knew he was the odd man out and the rest of the council was going to vote to repeal, he voted to repeal as well, even though he was a stinking ringleader who fought to have weed testing proven in Lake Forest, the epitome of a phony, Scott Voits. On June 15th, 2021, the council formally adopted ordinance 347, the repeal, item 12. Voits conveniently was absent at the meeting. In the meantime, our city attorney, sitting over here watching this all happen, was billing the city for over $100,000, never stepping in in the very beginning to stop it, just watch the circus, watch the Voits circuit go back and forth, and he kept the meter going for $100,000. Thank you, Best Besson Krieger. The report says there's no fiscal impact associated with this recommended action of hiring Winston's code enforcement. Is he working for free? City Manager? No fiscal impact.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, if you'd like to make a comment, please fill out a blue speaker card, turn it into the city clerk, and your name will be called. Comments are limited to three minutes per person, and when you are called to speak, a timer will be displayed on the screen. When the timer begins to flash on the screen, you'll have 30 seconds to finish your comment. Madam Clerk, have we had any other comments to speak tonight?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Our first speaker will be Charlene Fell, followed by Mr. Fell, followed by Randy Johnson. Charlene?
Okay, so my time's already starting. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmen. We won't be that hard on you. We want to speak tonight about the vendors that are coming. We've been seeing them a lot, and they're vendors that sell pineapple, fruit. What else have I seen in there? They're just on carts, they roll them around, and this is becoming a problem because we've been seeing them infiltrated into our city. The job that we do, we go to other cities, and we've seen this become a problem very fast. In fact, the city that we came from, that we lived in, was Riverside, East Riverside, a very prominent, nice area, got infiltrated by these vendors, and so we do not want to see that happen here in this city. So we're bringing it to your attention. I don't know if they're allowed, if they get some kind of a day permit, I don't know, but I'm kind of thinking not, and so we want to bring it to your attention. Well, do I speak for three minutes and then he'll speak? Okay, I think that's pretty much all I have to say on the matter. I'll let him have my minute and then his three.
Okay, let's restart the clock, please.
There we go. Hi, we're gonna kind of talk over each other on this. Hardworking businesses, we owned and operated in Riverside, the city of, for over 20 years, pulling permits, health codes, codes, everything it takes to run a business, paying your taxes, employees, and all the good stuff, be a pillar of the community. One thing that we saw, and it came in, it came in pretty quick, is nothing was done about it, and we're very, very cautious about it happening here in this beautiful city that we just moved to a year and a half ago, are these street vendors. They're, what I understand, they're unpermitted, they're setting up on corners with their fruit carts, they're creating trash, and they're loitering, the waste is going out in the streets when they're done with their jobs each day. Cars are stopping, sometimes double parking, creating traffic and potential, I've almost ran into a couple cars that I have seen and been a witness of vehicles hitting one another from illegal parking. With that said, one car did, in Riverside, was, we weren't witnesses to it, but we saw that a car was up on a curb and potentially hit a pedestrian, so it could lead to death. It sounds pretty serious, it is, but with these street vendors, the local businesses around don't deserve to have people set it for free, take money from them, and actually take money away from the city for your taxes and the permits and the business licenses, et cetera.
That's it in a nutshell.
Okay, thank you for bringing this to our attention. I'd like to ask our City Manager and maybe our City Attorney, can we speak to the current municipal code and ordinances that we have related to street vendors?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Council. In 2018, legislature approved SB 946, a sidewalk vending law, which permitted statewide these types of vendors. That law did allow some room for local regulation. We adopted regulation of these types of uses shortly thereafter. That is, in the municipal code, they are required to, for example, have insurance, to pull a permit, so they are regulated here in the city. We do have among the most strict regulations in the state. However, our friends in Sacramento have adopted subsequent laws to try to deregulate these types of uses. They really want these on the streets, but we do have rules in place in Lake Forest for these types of uses.
Excuse me, Mayor and members of the City Council. So this did come to our attention, and the speakers are correct. There are some of these users that do have permits and are allowed to be there, but many of them do not have permits, and so they are illegal. And so in those cases, we do enforce. So in reaction to this issue last year, the City Council did vote to add weekend code enforcement officers, and so we do have a code enforcement officer that works on the weekend because we realize that's when many of these vendors are out. And so we have had success in having carts confiscated when those do not have the proper permits, but we are chasing an issue, and so we do appreciate when members of the community come up to us and let us know what's going on, provide us a location so that we know where to focus our enforcement for the following upcoming weekend.
Thank you. Is there a particular email that residents could communicate information like that to us?
Sure, they should contact the Community Development Department. They could just call the main city line, and they would direct them over to the proper person.
Great. Thank you. Next speaker.
Our next speaker is Randy Johnson, followed by Bob Holdclaw, followed by Andrew O'Connor.
Randy Johnson, Lake Forest, these people I've never seen at the meeting before, they ask a question with regard to legal issues in the city of Lake Forest. She goes on and on and on and on. The city attorney speaks up and gives a long, long answer. When I've asked for answers in the past, I'm completely ignored. Why do they get a response and I never have before? And I've brought this to the council's attention over and over and over again. You completely disregard me, a veteran, Mr. Yu. I'm a veteran, sir. I spent eight years down at the border dodging bullets as a credential in 1811. That's the respect I get? Thank you, Council! This is directed mainly to you, but I'm addressing the entire council. At the last meeting, I spoke on item number 12, had to do with the Iran resolution, and at that time, I supported the resolution. I said, "That's fine, this is unprecedented. We normally don't have resolutions on foreign interests here, but if you're going to do this and open the door, well, let's go ahead and have a resolution to, for instance, mitigate the importation of fentanyl across our southern border and stop illegal immigration. That's having a devastating and harmful effect on our own population. We're running short on resources because we have to take care of a bunch of foreign indigents who are invading the country. Even with Title 42 in place, we still have record numbers of illegal migrants coming across the border that we have to take care of, okay? Mr. Yu, you just stood up and gave the pledge of allegiance. I asked you for a resolution to stop the illegal border invasion and also mitigate the fentanyl importation into this country. You ignored me, and yet you have the gall to stand up with a pledge of allegiance when it seems like you have a greater interest in the safety and security of the citizens of Iran than you do your own people, your own children. Shame on you, sir. I expect an answer from you, and if I don't get one, I'm going to continue coming back and I'm going to get in your face. Our citizens also deserve security and safety. So does our border. It's being overrun with indigent illegals coming across, stealing our resources. That's why we have a housing shortage? What do you think? Even the mayor of New York is complaining. That's a sanctuary city, and he's complaining he's being overrun with illegal migrants. So stand up, sir. Take a stand and support your own American citizens and our own children. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Bob Holdclaw.
As you can see, during these storms, it's washed away almost all the footing away from it. On the right side, you see small trees right there growing, and on the left is a dark spot there. It's already undermined completely. This ground on the top is in midair, and the only thing that's holding is those roots. I have to think that the city has some responsibility for this. Irvine Water didn't create this 10-foot ditch that runs through there, and the reason why is we kept on building and building, and more sewer water was, or drain water kept on going through that area, and it slowly dug and dug and dug. And this used to be a creek that would be two feet, you could jump over it. And now we get rainy storms, we've washed a cavity down there of 10 feet. It's ridiculous. Page two, you can see where those trees were on the side, now they're gone. They're down into the ditch. And slowly, if you look on the, right before the sewer line right there, you see cracks in the earth right there. Next rainstorm we have, that's going to go. That means this sewer line here is going to be standing in midair, and you don't think it can fall down or anything like that? The one that's just a bit further down, a tree fell down and wiped out the top of that vent right there. It could happen to this one, and if this falls, as my college degree was engineering, you take a little bit of math, you'll find that the bottom part right there, that's going to be the weak spot. And as someone said that, "Oh, we can't put cement down there." Well, the county did. Right on Toledo, where the storm comes through there, they put heavy rock and cement there. Not only did the county do something like that, but we did it. On page three, we put cement barriers right here supporting geronimo. So it can be done. Now, I don't blame the city completely, but I think we should include the county. Hey, you might as well go into the state, too, because everyone is in fault for endangering the whole area right there of too much water going down that one little creek. And I tell you, let's have everybody, I'll do a tour. I invite all of you. Let me know what day. It's going to be sunny all week. Let's have a tour, and we'll take everybody down.
We'll take note, if you can communicate to us the address exactly we're talking about here, then we'll follow up with our public works and look into this and find out where...
I'd be glad to email you directly.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks. Thank you. Our next speaker.
Our next speaker is Andrew O'Connor, followed by Abigail Factman.
Andrew O'Connor, Foothill Ranch. I believe the city requires this when we enter into a contract of significant money, over $1 million specifically, we get bids, and I've been asking for a bid for legal services. I don't know why Best Besson Krieger has a corner of our legal services. I was going to go to $1.3 million, and I says, "If we're in this much litigation, we've got something wrong with our city manager, we're doing something wrong." So I've sent in requests. I want to see what their fee schedule is. You have a copy of it tonight. The last one is from 2021. Can I get an updated one? And can we see it on the agenda, Mr. Mayor, my District One Councilman? Then we agendaize getting competitive bids for our legal fees. Second, it's ironic in the two previous council meetings that you provided more time to the Persian community than our own residents. When the D-2 boundaries were being discussed, we spent over $50,000 on qualified consultants. Voits literally smirked at longtime residents as they came up here one after another, asking to reconsider, keep it the way it is, but Voits just smirked right in their face. Voits' evil plan backfired as his favorite female candidate was not elected. Mayor Serbo begins his tenure taking away residents' First Amendment's rights to allow free speech. Residents are no longer allowed to participate remotely. D-2 councilwoman was allowed for over 20 months to participate remotely, and we never knew if the councilwoman was actually in Lake Forest. Many believed she was living in Costa Mesa. Councilman Serbo on a business trip to Salt Lake City participated remotely in 2022. AB 361 is still in effect. Serbo even said during 2023, he will not be able to participate, he will need to participate remotely because he will be on a business trip. Remember the president of Normandale HOA participated remotely? Has anyone addressed the concerns about traffic on Regency? Have they? So why did we take away participation remotely? It was going pretty good. I guess that one night that I was on there, I asked maybe seven or eight questions, Serbo says, "Well, we got to pull the plug on that. This is out of control." So what's the reason? Why are you stopping it? And I'll talk about that later because it will show the hypocrisy of this council, of the city manager and the city attorney, that you're a bunch of hypocrites. At one time, you want, I'll show you that you want the community to engage, and over here, you take away the remote possibility of council meetings.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. City Attorney, could you please elaborate again on the current status of AB 361 in relation to what Mr. O'Connor said tonight?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. AB 361 allows for remote meetings where two findings can be made. One is that there is an ongoing proclaimed state of emergency, and two is that local officials continue to recommend social distancing requirements. Those two findings have to be made every 30 days by a council or other legislative body in order for remote meetings to remain in place. The council stopped making those findings in part because the governor is getting ready to pull the plug on the alleged emergency, and there simply aren't local officials in Orange County who are still recommending these measures. Without that, there can be no remote access, except under the Brown Act, when a council individual is on business or vacation and posts his location pursuant to Brown Act regulations.
Thank you. So thank you for providing that information. Hopefully that helps Mr. O'Connor understand the situation better. Do we have another speaker? Madam City Clerk?
Yes, our final speaker on the public comment is Abigail Factman.
Hello?
Hello. Good evening, Mayor, City Council members, city manager and city staff, community leaders and residents. My name is Abigail Factman, and I'm here on behalf of U.S. Representative Young Kim, who is now serving you at the California's 40th Congressional District, which includes the city of Lake Forest. I am the field representative who will be representing the city. I'm here today to formally introduce myself as a direct point of contact in the congressman's office and let you know that we are here to serve you. Please do not hesitate to contact our office if you or anyone you know may need assistance with any federal agencies, are seeking resources, or if you'd like to voice your opinion on any legislative matter. Also, please feel free to follow us on our social media, @RepYoungKim, and sign up for our weekly e-newsletter to stay up to date with the congressman. And on behalf of the congressman, we look forward to serving the great city of Lake Forest. Thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight, introducing yourself, and helping us to have that cooperation among different agencies. We appreciate Congressman Kim and your representation here tonight. Thank you. Madam City Clerk, do we have any other speakers?
That completes our comments for this evening.
Thank you. Moving on to the consent calendar, all matters listed under the consent calendars are considered routine and will be enacted by one vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless members of the city council or staff request specific items to be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Have there been any requests to remove an item from the consent calendar?
I have received a request to speak on item number nine.
Number nine, okay.
Want to take that comment now?
Yes.
That's Mr. Randy Johnson.
Okay.
Mayor and City Council, item number nine is the second reading and adoption of ordinance 359, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Lake Forest, California, amending Article 1 of Chapter 6.14 of Title VI and Section 1.01.250 of the Lake Forest Municipal Code to provide for summary nuisance abatement procedures... to provide for summary nuisance abatement procedures, recovery of expenses, and modifying the process for notice, hearing and appeals regarding involuntary abatement of nuisance and determining the ordinance be exempt from CEQA.
Okay, let me be brief on that. First of all, this has to do with marijuana dispensaries, illegal ones here in the city of Lake Forest, okay? So that wasn't even mentioned. But anyway, last meeting, I brought to your attention some problems with some of the reporting out for the closed session items for October 4th. He reported out, the city attorney, that you gave him authorization to take legal action against an illegal business. However, there was nothing in the closed session item that indicated there was any discussion whatsoever on illegal businesses behind closed doors. I asked you, I sent you an email back on December 14th. I asked you last meeting, why is that? Why? Because I should have the right to know what you're discussing behind closed doors, at least a brief description according to the Ralph M. Brown Act. Why isn't he told to explain that to me like you're having him explain about vendors? Okay, have him explain that to me, too, will you please? Also, I submitted a public records request back on December 5th. It's 43 days old now. In this package of information, there is information that's included in the partial response. So far, there are 22 illegal businesses that have been investigated by the city of Lake Forest. Of the 22, it shows for 10 businesses, a total of, you know how much we spent for BBK to litigate these 10 businesses? Add them up, okay, for yourself. For God's sakes. And this hasn't even been discussed in public. Look how much we're paying BBK to fight these illegal businesses. And I've called neighboring cities, saying, are you having the same problem? No, not here, not here. And I'm talking to public safety officials about this, who are in the know. Why is this only happening in Lake Forest? Nobody's explaining that to us. And we have a right to know, especially we're paying, this is only a partial list, I'm sure it's well over $200,000 we're paying in illegal fees here to shut down these businesses. Why isn't the same thing happening in the neighboring cities? They don't seem to have the same problem as we're having here. Have him explain it to me, just like you had him explain about the vendors to them, okay? All right, is that fair enough? Or are you gonna ignore me again? And not get an answer? And again, I'm still waiting, 43 days old, my public records request, only a partial list of information. I mean, that's ungodly amount of time. This should be all indexed in the city files and should be easily retrievable, and they're dragging their feet because they don't wanna give me the information. Have him explain.
Thank you for comments. I'm actually surprised, Mr. Johnson, after our conversation this weekend, that you're reacting this way. And that we are expecting to have Mr. City Attorney take a moment here to explain the Brown Act in terms of the closed session, for your ratification on that. So, Mr. City Attorney, could you please address the issue that Mr. Johnson is talking about regarding closed session?
Yes, thank you.
It's not a dialogue.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. The Brown Act requires that when the council is reviewing either exposure litigation or the possibility of bringing litigation, that it lists the specific statutory number in the Brown Act, and that we are either looking at our exposure or the possibility of bringing litigation. That is the extent of the requirement in the government code. And that's a disruption of the meeting, and that's impermissible. That is what the Brown Act requires. That's exactly what the council does and what the city does. Now, once a case is filed, that case can be listed on the agenda, in fact, must be listed. That's exactly what the city does. But on October 4th, the council was looking at the potential of litigating, and that was listed exactly as required by the Brown Act. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Colleagues, do we have anything else that we're pulling from the consent calendar for discussion?
I'll move consent calendar.
All right. Second, let's vote, please.
That motion passes unanimously.
Okay, our next item on the agenda are discussion items. Madam Clerk, can you please read the title of item number 10?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Our item number 10 is the strategic plan quarterly update.
Very good. Madam City Manager, can you please introduce this item for us?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This is a quarterly update of our strategic plan, where we review some of our projects and let you know how we're doing on accomplishing those projects. And to provide our presentation, we have our assistant to the city manager, Sean McGovern.
Evening, Sean.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. This is the quarterly update of the city's strategic plan. This took place March 11th.
October, or the, this quarterly report covers October 1st, 2022 to December 31st, 2022. Brief history here, the plan was passed in spring of 2020 during the creation of the city's first two-year budget. The plan covers seven years, with most of the projects scheduled to be completed within two years to go along with the city's two-year budget cycle. The plan towards the back has a list of 66 projects. That's the implementation matrix, and this is the spreadsheet that the city manager's office uses to track progress on the plan and make those reports, or make these reports to the city council. Here's the progress that we've made since quarter one. Quarter one's all the way to the left, green is completed projects. Quarter five, all the way to the right. About half of the projects have been completed, and of the 66 projects, 60 of them, we've either started or made progress or totally completed those projects. So we're nearing the end of that two-year cycle. We also track the progress being made on a per-goal basis. Goal C is more of the kind of internal projects that I'm actually gonna summarize some of those next. Whereas Goal A, you're gonna see more yellow there because those are longer-term projects. Lot of CIP and infrastructure projects on there that take course over several years. So I'm gonna do just a brief update on the projects that were completed in this most recent quarter, and we've organized them on a, or we've categorized them on a per-goal basis. So remember, each of these projects ties back to one of the city's goals that the city council sets when they adopt the strategic plan. Goal A, our livable city is well-planned, attractive and safe. The first project here to report on is offer recreation that reflects the interests of the community. The popularity of pickleball continues to grow, and the city wanted to make sure that we're accommodating that in our programming. So in 2022, we introduced the first pickleball tournament series that included professional trainers. So far, it's been a very popular program, and we plan to continue that in 2023 and beyond. So that's offering something that's more reflective of what the community wants. Also, kind of an internal project here, energy efficiency assessment of city facilities. We completed a comprehensive review of the lighting fixtures at various city facilities. We did a cost-benefit analysis of switching to LED to reap the cost savings in doing so. In spots where it made economic sense to make that switch, we either made that switch already or planned to make that switch to LED in future CIP projects. And the most recent one was the park light pole conversions that happened in 2021. So whenever it makes sense to switch over to more cost-efficient lighting, we've made the decision to do that. Goal B, our connected city is engaged in form and technologically current. The council wanted to introduce more events as we recovered from COVID-19. So we're offering a wider array of events outside of the regular sports-related programming. We had a literature and culture project as part of the strategic plan. And as part of that, we held the first storytelling event that was held in conjunction with the city's Halloween event each year. That's spooktacular. And we also had our first author-speaker series, which was pretty well, which was pretty well-attended, and these are the photos from that event. There's another one planned for 2023. Goal C, our healthy city government is sustainable and well-run with committed people. Again, this mainly deals with the kind of the internal projects that happen here at City Hall. First goal is to modernize our document retention policies. As a public agency, we're subject to records retention rules that can change along with technology as that evolves. So this past quarter, the city clerk's office worked with a consultant to thoroughly review and update our records retentions policies per department. Lake Forest succession plan. So the strategic plan directed staff to work on succession planning as an, as an organizational goal. And to cap this project off, staff implemented a mentorship program and increased educational opportunities offered to staff. And most of this is geared towards preparing entry and mid-level staff for the next role that they may take here at City Hall. So it's kind of a professional development program to make sure that we're ready to make transitions as they come up and if they're needed. And those are the three, or sorry, those are the three categories of goals that have been completed during the previous quarter. The Lake Forest Shop and Dine gift card program was an initiative that we've already completed or we've already implemented. That happened in December of this year. The council approved that program last year with the intent on providing three rounds of this buy-one-get-one funding. We launched in early December with an initial round of $150,000. We're almost sold out of that. I think last time I checked, we had about $8,000 left. So we'll probably run out of that money within the next week or so. It's been a very popular program. We now have over 40 businesses signed up, it's either 41 or 42. And the first round was only marketed to Lake Forest residents. So all of our marketing and outreach efforts were specifically geared towards Lake Forest residents who could buy these cards. We planned to market the second round, which will be introduced within the next few weeks to Lake Forest residents and also people who work in Lake Forest. So these would be people that would traditionally make up the kind of lunch crowd throughout the week. And after that, after we run out of that funding allotment, which will be $175,000, the final round, we plan to make open to anyone. So anyone would be able to purchase that card. Lake Forest residents still had kind of first dibs, if you will, by our initial marketing. And all of those funds, whether you live in Lake Forest or not, have to be spent at Lake Forest businesses that signed up to participate in this program. So all of the money, one way or the other, comes back to Lake Forest. So what's next for the city's strategic plan? The plan is to provide an update every two years. And policy changes to the plan can be informed by the city's upcoming community satisfaction survey results, as well as the joint commission and city council workshop meetings that will make up the budget process for the next two-year budget. So you'll be hearing much more about this over the next few months. And other changes will be more technical, such as removing completed projects and finding spots for some of the newer projects that get planned. So with that, I'm available for questions.
Thank you, Sean, for the presentation, that quick update. Let me check with the city clerk to see if we've had any requests to speak on the strategic plan update.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have one request to speak. That's Andrew O'Connor.
Andrew O'Connor, Foothill Ranch. It's kind of a detailed report. I went through it, it took me over two hours to decipher it, look at it. I found a lot of lies in it, a lot of lies. You're just, it's incredible. Initiative SP 20, the LED retrofitting. Did this include the civic center and sports park? Anybody tell us? Wheeler, you're here. Did it? Do we have to put new LED lights in here? Hello, Wheeler? $200,000.
Please address your comments to the council. You have your three minutes on an upgrade. We won't answer during that time.
Okay. It was a show, you guys, left hand, right hand. That's what I'm saying, it's just incredible. It's just incredible. Do you folks move here? I've been here 30 years. SP number 24, hiring two deputies. The city manager continues to kick the can down the alley. You had no problem coming up with $550,000 for BOGO. What, some consultant, what was it? October showed up here, and you said, oh, it's too quick, we gotta go and all that. We signed up, we signed off $550,000, just like that. But for you to hire two deputies, it shows on the chart, you still haven't committed to it. Crime is up. Crime is up in the city, and you failed to hire two deputies. I've been talking to you for two years. I've asked for your resignation on this because you haven't taken action. And you still haven't taken action. But you're all happy that you got this BOGO going. But there's crime in the city. We got marijuana, we gotta bring another code guy in because it's out of control. And you just sit there. What a joke. Goal B, the strategic plan says, SP number three, explore the use of new technology. Encourage two-way connectivity, including two-way communications that enhances community engagement. What happens? You take away remote for council meetings, just like that. Serbo, step right in, there goes remote. But right here, it says Goal B, what we should do. Initiative SP 36, the city manager during the toll booth feasibility study was to be raided for not having adequate library. Procure, SP number 47, procure a consultant developing asset management plan, cost of $300,000. You were the assistant city manager under Dunick. You're the city manager now, and you're telling me you don't know what assets we have? And we gotta hire a consultant to find out? And this is costing us $300,000? Seriously? You are the city manager, you should be fired. I'd be embarrassed to say I have to get a consultant for $300,000 to tell the council what our assets are.
I'd like to just ask our madam city manager, we can follow up with some written responses to Mr. O'Connor's or if there's an opportunity, if you'd want to address some of those things and speak to them now, that's your option. Please let me know what you'd like to do.
I'll respond to anything the council would like me to respond to.
Okay, I'll think in the interest of some communication here, if you would mind taking a look at some of the things that were broached here and maybe provide some additional information that would be correct.
Certainly, Mayor. So looking at what was mentioned by our speaker, the first was talking about adding two deputies. So that is something that will be looked at during our budget process. We do a seven-year financial forecast. Adding deputies is extremely expensive. And so we will take a look at that along with what's going on with our crime rates and really evaluate before we do something of that magnitude. So that's gonna be part of what we discuss during our two-year budget update. As for asset management, we're doing that project in order to be able to financially forecast what our replacement needs are gonna be into the future. And so in order to do that, you have to create a baseline. So we have consultants going to each of our parks and counting every fixture, locating every bench, doing a GPS location of every sign, every light pole, every volleyball court, all of our assets so that we can put them on a schedule for replacement. So we know how much money we need to set aside in our reserves in order to be able to replace them. We do not wanna get overwhelmed by our replacement costs for our infrastructure. And so in order to really control that and really protect the city's financial outlook over the next 10 to 20 years, we need to have a firm grasp on what are our capital assets. And so the step to do that is to have a consultant go out and physically count and document every asset we have. And so that's what that money is spent for. And I think that is the best $300,000 we have spent in quite some time because it is an investment into the future of this community, and it's gonna protect our financial well-being well into the future.
Great, thank you very much. I appreciate that feedback and that response, and we can take a look at some of the other items on here and figure out what an appropriate response is. Thank you very much. Okay, do we have any other speakers on this matter, Madam City Clerk?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. You don't have that option at this point, Mr. O'Connor. So you've skated your three minutes, and we've had a short rebuttal. That's the end of the discussion.
Okay, so my position doesn't work in Lake Forest.
Well, you're stating incorrect things, and we tried to correct you and give you information about that. So you could continue to be, to be, you know, speak these things, and we're trying to give you information and correct information that you may... trying to give you information and correct information that you may not be aware of. So at this point, you've skated your three minutes. We've had a response from our city manager and we're done with that item. So please have a seat. Excuse me? I'm, I'm telling you that we're done with that. Please sit down. Yes, Council, I mean, Mayor Protam Tetemar.
Thank you very much. If I could make a suggestion, thank you for the information. Make a suggestion that I believe in the tables, it mentions budget impact as one of the columns. I don't know, but I assume those are, I'll say capital budget impacts, but I don't know. But I'm, I'm wondering if it may, would make sense to also include an operational budget or a projected annual operational budget impact because this is the cost to build something, but then we have the cost to maintain it. So that way, when we are the community, review these documents, they can understand only the one-time outlay we'll have, but also the ongoing implications of whatever that is. You do that, I think, for the, the two officers, it says 800,000 first year, but 600,000 ongoing. So just taking that and putting it into a column might be helpful going forward. In the case of the LED lights, we could actually see a reduction. You actually see a negative number potentially there for, for energy savings. So if, something maybe we can incorporate for future reports. Thank you.
Yes, Councilman Boitz.
Yeah, I was going to say that, you know, the facts are fuzzy sometimes, but the fact that we have street signs that are coming, and we have reserves for that because we've gone forth and the time that those are to be replaced have come forth. And so we are prepared for that. So thank you for the strategic planning that we do do to keep our reserves balanced and budgeted for the future. You know, there was a question comes up about the gift card program. Would you like to explain where we're getting that money? That's not coming from our general fund, but the fact that we're making that available to our residents and our businesses to stimulate the economy here in Lake Forest.
Thank you, Councilmember Boitz. So our community gift card program is a project that we're doing. It is general fund money, actually. So we did receive money from the federal government during COVID. And so that, we were able to use that money to pay for our operational expenses related to COVID. A lot of those operational expenses related to law enforcement. And so because of that money, we were able to free up other monies to invest in our business community, which we know took several hits during COVID and really struggled. So we wanted to do some economic development and some economic stimulus that would benefit our businesses, but also benefit our residents. And so the council was able to identify these funds that we could use for three rounds of gift cards. And so the way the program works is in each round, a person can buy two gift cards for either 25, 50, or $100. And the city will match the 25, 50, or $100. So a person could buy at a maximum two $100 gift cards and receive two matching $100 gift cards. That would go to the businesses in Lake Forest that have signed up for this program. So one of the questions that we receive is, well, in each round, because I already bought my two in round one, am I precluded from round two and three? The answer is no, you're not. You're able to buy in each round. And so it's been a very popular program and it's actually been very encouraging. We have a lot of residents that go to their favorite business, ask their business, are you participating? And then the business calls us. And so we've had a lot of residents go out and actually help us build this program. So it's really gaining momentum and it's very appreciated through the business community as well.
Thank you. Now, can I fit in my contact? Sean, if you could forward that. Actually, one of the questions we were talking at dinner tonight was, were our gift cards re, able to, where we recalculate it into where we could buy more gift cards for the city? So Sean, if you could come forward, please. Rest of the questions are, I think, are yours. It was your presentation. Do we, do we, of the $140,000 we put out, how much of the city, how many businesses, how much has the businesses received in benefit from this right now?
I wish I had exact numbers to give you. We can, we get updates of those exact numbers daily. I believe about a third of the money that we've put out has been redeemed. So although we're down to $8,000 left in the BOGO fund, that means that people have bought these cards, but not everybody has used them all up yet. So over the next few months, we should see most of these cards get used and put out to the business community.
And I'm reinforcing the fact that they have a six-month window on the first, the gift card from the city.
On the BOGO card. That is correct. Yep, six months.
I, I think it's a wonderful program and thank you. That was my only question.
Hey, thank you. Any other council members have any comments or questions on this matter? Councilmember, you.
I do have another question. The other add-on is regarding the redistricting budget. There's a $70,000 budget for that particular part of thing. And I understand that we got a qualified consultant at the price of 50 grand. So what that dollar, 20 grand is going to go?
The additional money does not get spent. So we only spend what we use. So we paid for the consultant and then there was some public education costs, but not very much. So the majority of that 20,000 just gets absorbed back into the budget.
Thank you. That's all.
Okay, with that, we're going to receive and file this particular update. Thank you very much, Sean. As a parliamentary protocol element, I want to ask Mr. City Attorney, is, am I correct in the response for a speaker who's done their three minutes and then we get provided an answer? Is there any additional allowance for a rebuttal from the speaker?
No, Mr. Mayor, there's not.
Thank you very much for confirming that. Okay, Madam City Clerk, could you please help us with the title of item number 11?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Item number 11 is legislative platform for 2023.
Thank you. Madam City Manager, help us to introduce this, this item, please.
Thank you, Mayor. The legislative platform are all of the policy statements that the council would like the staff to advocate when we look at legislation coming from Sacramento. And so to provide a report for you tonight, we have our assistant to the city manager, Sean McCover.
Here we go, Sean. Take two.
Thank you. Good evening again, Mayor and members of the council. This is a update on this, on the, on the city's 2023 legislative platform for the council's consideration. Every year, the council has, establishes a legislative platform and the legislative platform includes a list of policy priorities agreed upon by the city council. Most of these policy priorities relate to state-level legislation. So every year, the state or legislators at the state level propose laws that may have an impact on local governments. And staff use the legislative platform to determine if that's something that the city council would be in favor or in opposition to. And many of these, many of the tenants in the city's legislative platform deal with the issue of municipal independence. So oftentimes, the state will pass laws that make cities do something, sometimes without money or without help. And that's something that the city traditionally has been opposed to. So what do staff do after the adoption of the legislative platform? So we get most of our information and updates about laws that are being proposed through CalCities or the California League of Cities. And they make us aware of bills that, that could potentially impact how the city functions. Over the last few years, there's been a lot of bills about bikes, e-bikes, housing, ADUs, things like that. And staff automatically author position letters on behalf of the city council after we look at the legislative platform. The mayor then signs those and then we send those bills to the proponents of those bills that are working in Sacramento. And when there's a bill that's proposed that staff has made aware of, that doesn't really fit into any of the tenants of the legislative platform, we come to the city council individually with that bill and ask them to take a position and direct staff to, to either write a letter in opposition or a letter of support. And then we send it along to the advocates of that bill. So what's being proposed to the night, so what's being proposed tonight is the adoption of the 2023 legislative platform that is a copy and paste of the 2022 legislative platform. So the platform from last year with one minor text change. In 2022, intergovernmental funding related to COVID-19 was, was a big topic for Lake Forest. Now that COVID-19 is in, is, is in the rears, we still think that it's beneficial for the city to advocate for some flexibility with regard to this, in, with, excuse me, with regard to intergovernmental funding as it relates to public health declarations, natural disasters and other emergencies. So although another COVID-19 may not happen, something similar to it may happen. And what happened in 2021 and 2022 is we received intergovernmental funding where the federal government wanted us to spend quickly to help local businesses and residents, but attached a huge amount of rules to it. So we thought that, that advocating for a streamlined position was the way to go. And that really helped the city because the federal government responded by making that funding more streamlined in that scenario. So that's the only proposed change for 2023 legislative platform and available to answer questions if there are any.
Hey, thank you for that presentation. We've been handed a piece of paper, has, I guess, an additional item to legislative platform? Okay. Oh, this is Councilman, Member U. I guess I should read this proposed or do you want to go ahead and, yeah, we'll do public comment. Actually, we'll do that public comment first and then we'll come back to that. So, Madam City Clerk, do we have any folks that want to speak on this item?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have two speakers. Andrew O'Connor, followed by Randy Johnson.
Okay.
Did you not want to speak on this item? Okay. Then, Mr. Johnson?
Well, Randy Johnson. Lake Forest, I want to have you focus your attention on a certain Senate bill, Senate Bill 1338. That was the care court. I mean, it's pretty unusual to see a bipartisan support for a bill coming out of Sacramento about 98%. Democrats and Republicans came together and said, we need to pass this care court bill because these severely mentally ill or drug addicted homeless people who don't know what the, what planet they're living on really need our help. And it's not incarceration like Mr. Pecuano said it was, okay? It's a community-based treatment program that's being rolled out throughout all 58 counties in California. Orange has been selected as one of the first seven cohort counties that is going to launch this program in October, I believe, of this year. So we're only about, what, eight months away? All right? We haven't even had a discussion here about care courts. Pecuano went on California Insider and trash talked it as the mayor of Lake Forest, as if he represented the consensus of the city of Lake Forest. That made me so irritated when I saw that. He was identified as the mayor of Lake Forest and he started trash talking the care courts when all these other politicians are in favor of it, to include the board of supervisors, all five. All five supported this. Okay? Now, we're going to have an opportunity to get money here in Lake Forest from the state through the county in order to take some of these very needy people off the street that we see every day. The ones who are wetting and crapping their own pants, who don't know what planet they're on, drug addicted, severe mental illness with schizophrenia or bipolar disorder, okay? And with needles in their arms? I guess Pecuano would rather have them go to prison after committing a crime where there's no treatment at all. They're just thrown into a cold, dark cell and told to survive. You know, he doesn't care about them. Unbelievable. The guy who worked for Orange County Sheriff's Department as the homeless liaison and he wants to throw him under the bus. But I guess the nonprofits are making such a huge profit off these homeless, they don't want the state to come in and steal their thunder. Maybe that's the problem here. These, these nonprofits are making huge amounts of money off the homeless problem. Why would they want the problem to go away when the cash flow would disappear at the same time? None of you talk about this. No discussion. There was a gag order at the homeless town hall. We weren't even allowed to speak at a town hall from Pecuano on this matter. And we submitted written questions. We didn't get answers for five weeks afterwards. Start talking about these things.
Thank you for your comments.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'm told Mr. O'Connor would like to speak now.
Okay.
Andrew O'Connor, Foothill Ranch. This dovetails into the malarkey of our city council in that every summer, they go to Sacramento to, who knows what the hell they do. I ask them, what are you going to do when you're up there? They never tell us. And when you come back, I ask you, what did you do? I don't get an answer. But I look at your expense accounts. Boy, you guys party pretty good. You party pretty good, Tetemar. Voitz. Pecuano, you, you, you did too good. You did good. How do I know? Because I asked for a request and I got all your receipts. So as we look at your calendar, your travel calendar, this is coming up again. I'm sure you're all going to go. You're all going to go. And I'll ask you again, well, what are you gonna, what's your focus? And you'll just give me the deer in the headlights look again. And then when you come back, I'll ask you again, well, what did you accomplish or what did you learn? And what's, how's that can help Lake Forest? And I get the same response, deer in the headlights. So tell me, Tetemar, you went last year. Pecuano, you went. Voitz, you went. What'd you learn? What'd you bring back to the city of Lake Forest besides the high expense account? You know? The funniest one, folks, is when it was in Long Beach. When it was in Long Beach, you think they were the car pooled. No, they all went in their separate cars. They all went in their own separate cars and they all put mileage down. And Robinson didn't even go and he operates at the port, didn't even go. But four other councilmen went all separate cars so they can collect mileage. And then when I asked them, when you came back, what'd you accomplish? What did you learn? No response. I put it in writing. No response. So Tetemar, you've gone these things, what, you've been on the council, what, 12 years? Can you just say, hey, yeah, I went this one year. I learned this. I brought it back. Can you, can you say that? City Attorney, can he talk? I mean, he looks like he's scared to death up there. I mean, there's just a small amount of people in here. And the way you run the city council that you won't interact is seriously flawed. I don't know what these people think is the first time here. I'm glad they stuck around. Most people come and they leave. But you know who I look out in the audience and I'm looking for that one person, the Clean Lake Forest lady? Whatever happened to her? Whatever happened to the Clean Lake Forest lady? She used to be here all the time. Just like that, she disappeared. Voitz, do you know where she went? And is there a date for the next Clean Lake Forest coming up in 2023? Is that going to happen? Just simple questions. That's all I want to know. Just simple questions.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. City Attorney, I want to ask you a question. Could you please maybe just outline how the protocol and how this works in terms of public comments and what our responses in terms of the city council can be at this point?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. There, there are, there are rules that govern the, the open comment period and rules that govern comment on each agenda item. Those are different. So on agenda items, the public has a right to speak for up to three minutes on any agenda item. In the open comment period, it's that same right to speak for three minutes. The council can respond or not respond to any comment. And, but if a comment is raised during the open comment period and isn't on the agenda otherwise, the council cannot deliberate or discuss that issue that was raised. They can give a brief response or ask staff for a brief response to that issue that was raised. They can agendize it for a future discussion at a future council meeting, but they cannot address that issue at the present council meeting. But for those items that are on the agenda, there can be a discussion, there can be a response, but it is council prerogative.
Great. Thank you for that information. Okay, moving back to Councilmember you and another one of the items for legislative platform to address, please.
The first rule, I just going to read the language I want to add to our legislative platform. The language is the city of Lake Forest is opposed to any legislation, legislation or regulation that mandates otherwise opposed affirmative action unless required by federal law. And yesterday, we honored the legacy of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. And I just wanted to repeat, he's a very famous co-judge now by the, seeing the color of the skin. And I just want to repeat, he's a very famous co-judge now by the color of the skin, but the content of character. As an immigrant, I value this opportunity to live in America because the fairness and equality and I believe affirmative action is now the way forward. And eight years ago, we have ICA V strike put by the state legislature. Two years ago, we have a state ballot initiative defeated by the voters. And from my perspective, you know, we have the same opportunity to live into equality. And at the same time, we do not need any affirmative action that benefits one group of minority at the expense of the other or at the expense of the American in general. So I think it's very important as the city of Lake Forest, we stand up for the inclusiveness, equality and fairness and I dislike to our city legislative platform. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Councilman You. Wanted to check with our Mr. City Attorney in terms of this language adding to our legislative platform or are there things regarding affirmative action that we can or cannot do and then we'll have a discussion amongst the council?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. The language that's proposed can certainly be added to the ledge platform. What that would do is require staff to track any legislation or new regulations that are imposed by Sacramento or that are proposed, I should say, and then act in accordance with the statement that's been proposed. But there's nothing that would be impermissible with moving forward with that language if the council majority chose to do so.
See, thank you. Okay, council members, comments about this particular amendment to the legislative platform? Mayor Protim, Tedamer.
Sorry. I would like to see if there's interest in continuing this item because I would like some more time to not only understand this but talk to legal counsel about it. So I would not be prepared to support it at this time until I have more time. Obviously, you've had more time to craft your words, but I'd like to know more about it and understand the implications of it. So my suggestion will be we continue this item. I don't think there's anything time sensitive about it. I would ask that we would continue the entire item so we can then, I at least, I would like more time with this particular edition.
Okay, thank you.
That's my motion.
Okay, we have a motion.
I'll second that.
We have a comment to mimic Councilmember Voits.
I actually believe that, you know, obviously, we've been inundated with water. They continue to talk about drought, conserving water, but the fact is we have unlimited source of water along our Pacific coast and the fact is the California legislators, the state, the Coastal Commission does not allow us to look into desalt. I think that I'd like our staff to support the future desalting of the water off our coast to actually supplement our water intake from the Colorado River and Sierra Nevadas. So I think it was just something for us to discuss and watch. I think it's a common sense thing that as we go into the future, we better start looking at other sources of water. So I'd like to include that in the future discussion. I support continuing this.
Okay, so we have Councilmember You's statement and we have desalinization. Councilmember Voits is wishing to add to a discussion for us to have as a future situation. Should we vote on what we have been presented with tonight, Madam City Manager, and then have these other two items as possible future addendums to the legislative platform?
It's really up to your pleasure. You could do that or you could table all of it and then if we need to send letters to Sacramento or react to anything, we could go off the current ledge platform.
All right, any comments from council members? Oh, okay, so we have a motion and we have a second to table the entire discussion? All right, let's vote on that particular motion then, please.
That motion passes unanimously?
Thank you. Madam City Clerk, can you please read the title of item number 12?
Item number 12 is the membership and association of California Cities, Orange County.
Thank you. Madam City Manager, help us with the introduction of this item, please.
Thank you, Mayor. We have a brief presentation by our city clerk, Lisa Bergland.
Yes, Mayor and members of the city council. During the November 1 city council meeting, Councilmember Voits received consensus to consider rejoining the Association of California Cities, Orange County, also commonly known as ACCOC. The city of Lake Forest was a member of ACCOC going back to 2011. Shortly after the onset of COVID-19 pandemic, the city council voted not to renew its membership as a cost savings measure. Since that time, some individual council members have attended ACCOC events and programs on a ad hoc, as needed basis, paying non-member registration rates. Some of those events were comped as well, for the record. So at this time, it would be appropriate for the council to decide whether or not, how to move forward with the membership.
Okay, thank you for that quick outline. Have we received any speakers for this particular item?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have Andrew O'Connor for this item. And we also have a second speaker, Mayor Janine Hef of Laguna Hills.
Great, okay.
Andrew O'Connor, Foothill Ranch. What's the cost of this? What's it going to cost us to get into this thing, I may know? First thing a taxpayer wants to know, what's it cost? Do you know, City Manager? So how can you join something that we don't know what's going to cost us? But I know Voits probably wants it because he wants to get mileage to go to it and he's probably hooking it in with Don Wagner. So when he goes to these events, he's out there talking of Don Wagner, you know, like he did at the Tiller days in Tuscon. So I don't think there's enough information that's been put out here. What's the benefit of us joining it? You go, we're going to go in there with a bunch of other cities? Are they going to do what they want to do and we get left behind? Is this going to be another OCPA, Voits? We're going to join an association that goes nowhere? Is that a rival? I mean, the information that's given to us right now, I don't see any need for it. You don't tell me what the cost is. You don't tell me advantage of it. What's the benefit for Lake Forest? Sounds like just you and your buddies are going to chum around again, have meetings, gives you a chance to get some more mileage. Until that's identified, how can you join association? Don't look at me, give me the answers. Give me answers how much it costs. What's the purpose? What's the charter? What's it done in the past? What's this association done so good in the past that you can point to? This association did this and that's why we should join it? I don't hear that. But Voits wants to join it so he can get mileage. He probably wants to get on the board so he gets another $250 citation. You still haven't told us what the hell goes on in the TCA, you've been on that thing for five years. The last council meeting, you said this thing's falling apart and because it's falling apart, I need to stay there, vote me in. I'm thinking, you got to be kidding me, the whole thing should be washed out, including you.
Keep your comments on topic, please, Mr. O'Connor.
Okay, I'm just dovetailing them. I know that dovetails over Voits' head because, you know, he doesn't even have a high school diploma, that guy right there, and he sued us for $500,000. So until you can answer what the benefit is of joining this association, we shouldn't join it. If you do join it, it shows your hypocrisy, that you're budget minded, you're thinking out for the citizens. You're going in something blind. Is that the way you run the city? I think it is because I've already demonstrated that the city manager can't even hire two deputies. She goes BOGO instead of deputies. So now we're going to join this association without knowing what the benefits are? Benefit? Cost? What is it? You haven't described it, you haven't explained it. Do you know, Mayor? You don't, because they're just sitting there looking stupid.
Thank you very much for your comments. We'll address your questions here shortly with our council comments and also we have our next speaker.
Mayor Janine Hef.
Good evening, Mayor Servo, Mayor Protim, Mark Tedamer, and Councilmembers Voits, Pecano, and You. Thank you for this time tonight, I appreciate this. I am the mayor of Laguna Hills. My name is Janine Hef, I think you all know me. And I'm also the president of the ACCOC, otherwise known as the Association of California Cities, Orange County. And I want to just let you know that we understand a lot of cities went through the same thing during the COVID times and understood, you know, from your, you know, early summary that you decided to step down and not be a member. We'd really, really appreciate you coming back as a member of the ACCOC. And to kind of address what the gentleman was asking, the ACCOC represents the interests of Orange County cities locally and regionally, as well as the state and federal level. So we're an advocacy organization for cities and we basically provide programming, events, and advocacy programs focused on public policy that reflects the issues unique to those who live and work in our communities. And just coming off script, really, when I think about the ACCOC and the time that I've spent there, it's really all about local control. It's about making sure that you, as the leaders of your cities, can make decisions for your cities better than someone in Sacramento who's trying to take away that ability to make those decisions. We have 34 cities and, you know, Lake Forest is a great city here and we'd love to have you back. We feel like we're stronger. And they say their strength in numbers and they're stronger with more members. And we have a lot of, really, I think, very timely and good events coming up. The next one is going to be February 16th. It is going to be our Mass Shooting and Critical Incident Preparedness Forum. As you know, our sister city of Laguna Woods suffered a terrible tragedy last year and this is how you're prepared as a leader of your city to be able to deal with these things. We also will have an advocacy trip to Sacramento, March 6th through 7th. Would join you, love you to join us. And April 17th through the 20th to Washington DC where we can make our voice known. The ACCOC is about making sure that the voices of our cities in Orange County are not ignored in Sacramento and Washington DC. And I appreciate your time, just want to let you know our new executive director, Chris Murray, is here as well. And if you have any questions, I am here. Thank you so much. And thank you. I believe the gentleman before me had asked about the amount. There's a formula, it's $5,000 plus a, I believe it's just a factor. It ends up being $16,931.56 for the year. But in consideration of everything that happened during COVID and what cities have gone through and what they've had to endure, we made a decision across the Board of Directors last November to give a 10% discount permanently. And that would be $15,238 with that 10% discount being $1,693. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mayor Hef, for coming tonight and providing that additional information. Council comments, questions, discussion? Councilmember Pecano.
Okay, can staff tell me how much we spent on ACCOC when we were in or when we got out of them? How much did we spend total in a year?
In the last year, we didn't pay for any events that were attended. They, those admissions were comped.
Okay, so when we got out of it in 2020, did, I mean, did we go to any of their events? I know in 2022 we did, but about 2021 or 2020?
There were minimal events, about two events that we did end up purchasing registration fees for and they were a couple hundred dollars.
Okay.
Thank you. Other council members, Councilmember Voits.
So Mayor Janine, if you could please, there's 34 cities in the county of Orange. Do we have all 34 cities? What cities, how many cities do we have that are participating as members right now with the ACCOC?
Right now, we have 21 cities. And I think before COVID, we had close to 27 or 28. I think that was obviously something that cities had to take into consideration, also the League of California cities. So we're looking to increase that number to be able to have a stronger voice for Orange County.
Okay, so I know that my fellow council members, time is of the essence and the fact is that sometimes it's hard to fit in meetings when you have a full-time job and then you have city council in the evenings sometimes. I think I've talked to other members of the ACCOC, maybe the Honorable Chris Murray I've maybe talked to. Have you guys talked about having evening continuing education? You know, best policies, you know, I've always got it a lot and I know that some of the residents don't know, but the fact is that when we come to your meetings and stuff, we get to discuss ideas and best practices with other council members. You guys have professionals and industry, the best, that are coming and doing seminars for us, as does the League of Cities, but you guys are here in Orange County representing our county, which actually sometimes has a different mentality than the state of California as a whole. So have you guys talked about doing evening meetings or that rather than just daytime education?
Yes, absolutely. For quite some time, we were doing dinner meetings and Chris and I have been discussing specific speakers that we're looking to bring on. One of them would be Bob Page, who is the new registrar of voters. And I think a lot of people are interested to find out, you know, what's going on with our elections, what the process is. And so we're looking to bring on speakers like that. Fiona Ma, who is the controller and looking to find out more about pensions and different topics that interest cities and that cities are needing to find out more about so they can make better decisions. So yes, and I guess just to kind of speak to your point, we did have an all-day, it was from 7:30 AM till probably about 7:00 PM newly elected orientation for newly elected council members just last week. We had about 90% of all newly electeds attend and they got to sit there and drink from the fire hose, literally, thank you, Councilman You, for coming as well. And basically learn about everything related to government, full-service cities, police, fire, special districts, everything you can imagine. And that's what we're looking to do because we're Orange County centered. And that's one of the reasons, I think, we really relate to the Orange County cities versus, say, with the League of Cities, you've got some county up, you know, in Yuba. And what kind of relationship do we have in terms of how we do things here in Orange County? We do things very differently.
Okay, thank you for your responses. Any other questions from council members?
Any other questions?
Councilmember You.
Thank you, Mayor Janine Hef. I got a question here is, as we've got a pretty much a super majority number of Orange County participates in this program, I understand you are advocacy group and a lot of times you expect people pay their fair share here. But my question is, can you give me the list of the cities that are not currently enrolled? And in term of the population, which city has a larger, similar or larger population than Lake Forest? Thank you.
I'm, okay, I know the member cities, I'm trying to think of it. Cypress is not a member city, Rancho Santa Margarita is not a member city. I have, off the top of my head, I don't have them memorized.
Do we have that list, Chris?
Yeah, we could certainly give that information to you, any information you're looking for. But like I said, it's 21 out of the 34 right now. There were more. And we're here tonight to ask you to reconsider joining because we believe there are a lot of benefits for cities and, you know, we're stronger together to be able to have that voice in Sacramento and Washington DC.
Let me return my question here. Just try to get an answer here.
Sure.
So the largest city in Orange County, Anaheim.
Anaheim.
In Connor College from a different city, Anaheim, Irvine, Santa Ana are in and Newport Beach are in, right?
I believe all of those except for Irvine, but I'm actually meeting with the mayor of Irvine next week to be discussing rejoining as well.
Hanan Beach are in.
Hanan Beach, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mayor Protim, Tedamer.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Oh, you have a question?
Yeah, sorry. So you and I have spoken and one of the things I want to make a pitch for is trying to make more evening events. I don't know if you've surveyed those that do come or those that don't come to find out why, but for me, I have a full-time job and so coming to daytime's events is difficult. Unless I use my vacation time, it's not really possible. So I don't know if there's a conversation out there to be had to see if there's an interest in trying to do things, more things. had to see if there's an interest in trying to do things, more things in the evening so others can attend.
Absolutely. I think I mentioned just a few minutes ago that we are looking to bring back our dinner meetings with speakers that are going to have, you know, good information for cities.
Yeah, I mean, generally speaking, I think more people can be available in the evening. But when daytimes are selected, you are selecting to not have some people show up. And so that's been my, one of my challenges here. I know it may be unique to me, maybe others are retired or have more flexibility, but that's not really my case. So I'm glad to hear there's still dialogue going on about how to increase evening events.
I heard you loud and clear, and we're definitely looking into that.
Thank you.
Now, given the short presentation that we've had here tonight, I guess, now, I might be open to tabling this for a vote on rejoining after gathering some more information about the value that ACCOC provides, unless there's other councilmembers who feel differently. So if that's something that I can put out there as a motion to, you know, take this information, and we can assess the value, and then bring this to a vote at a future council meeting is what I'm proposing.
Mayor, would you be open to my executive director saying a few words to give you some more information?
I think we want to engage maybe that on an offline basis.
All right, that's no problem.
I think, thanks very much for coming tonight, Ms. Murray. I appreciate that, and good for you to be here and, you know, help us understand a little bit more about this. But, you know, given the shortness of the information provided to us, I'm really interested to find out, you know, what the value is here for us and make sure that we make the wise investment. So.
Absolutely, and we are available to speak to you offline and give you whatever information you need.
Great.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'll second your motion.
Okay, let's vote. And to be clear, we're voting on tabling this for a future vote. That would be a yes vote if you concur.
That motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Councilman Voitz.
Yeah, you know, just something that the ACCOC could look into, you know, just recently, we had to redo our arena numbers. The state came back for some changes they wanted us to do. And part of it, Mayor Janine, you might have seen it, group housing, rehab housing in our neighborhoods. I think that some of the mandates that are coming down from the state, I think that all of the people in the audience are totally against the state of California coming in, trying to mandate into our cities. And so that's something that I think is a good point for us to unify against is the state of California and their mandates upon us as cities.
May I say a word, Mr. Mayor?
Okay, one last response, please.
Yeah, let me just, yeah, thank you so much, Councilman Voitz, for bringing that up. I noticed that in your legislative platform, you talked about the League of California Cities giving you updates on the different bills coming down from Sacramento. That's something we do as well, and it's with Orange County interests in mind. And AB 2011, we put out a bulletin to definitely be against that. That was basically taking away our ability to make decisions for our city and have developers come in and just be able to develop anywhere they want. So these are things we are fighting against, and I don't want to make it seem like it's just, oh, you know, learning about, you know, different events. No, it is a fight. And Orange County together can, I think, be a lot stronger with our cities together in that fight. So, thank you.
All right, moving on. Madam City Manager, could you please read the title of item number 13?
Yes, Mayor. Item number 13 is consider a contribution to Reefs Across America.
Thank you. Back to Madam City Manager. Can you please introduce this item for us, please?
Yes, thank you. Back to our city clerk, Lisa Berglin.
Mayor and City Council, thank you. During the December 20th, 2022 council meeting, Councilmember Pecano received consensus for the city council to consider becoming a sponsor for Reefs Across America. Councilmember Pecano had shared that he was the keynote speaker at a wreath-laying service at El Toro Memorial Park in December. Established in 2016, Reefs Across America is a nonprofit organization founded by Morrel Worcester in Harrington, Maine. Mr. Worcester is the owner of Worcester Wreath Company. And in 1992, nearing the end of the holiday season, he found himself with a surplus of holiday wreaths. Mr. Worcester decided to honor the country's veterans, and with the assistance of the Maine State Senator, he was able to coordinate arrangements to make sure that the wreaths were placed at grave sites in Arlington National Cemetery. He worked with fellow veterans and volunteers and has expanded the program to different locations across the United States. Their mission is to remember our fallen U.S. veterans by honoring those who serve and teach our children the value of freedom. This year's National Reefs Across America Day is Saturday, December 16th, 2023, and the theme is Serve and Succeed. It's emphasizing the importance of service and the positivity of kindness. At this time, it would be appropriate for the council to decide how to move forward on this proposal.
Okay, before we go to a public comment on this, I wanted to give an opportunity to Councilmember Pecano if you wanted to add to that presentation at all before we go to anybody who wants to speak on this, please.
Yeah, so I, like, like the city clerk said, that I was a keynote speaker at this event. And as I was there, I ran into the mayor of Mission Viejo, and, you know, I was surprised to see her there. And she says, well, I'm coming with a $500 check to give him for wreaths. And I thought, well, why is another city coming to pay? Or I was kind of embarrassed that we weren't paying for wreaths for our fallen soldiers. So I thought, well, I'll just come up for consensus, and hopefully we can look at this, or, you know, at least give money to the project. And the Daughters of the American Revolution, they were, I was fairly impressed with them. They were, their service hours, I mean, I think they run circles around the Girl Scouts according to their service hours. So, but anyway, that's what prompted me to do this.
Okay, thank you for that additional information. Madam City Clerk, do we have anyone who wanted to speak on this matter?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have Andrew O'Connor.
Okay.
We have no speakers.
Okay, councilmembers, any discussion? Councilmember you.
So how much the dollar amount we're talking about here?
I, so, I, when, that day that I was there, I was speaking to them, it's $15 a wreath. And what I was going to propose is that we, we pay for 34 wreaths, which is $510. And, you know, people have asked me, well, why don't you ask for a whole lot more? Well, because this isn't budgeted in 2023, five, you know, 510 for 34 wreaths. Because I wanted to do $500, but since they're 15, it's not going to end up, it's going to be $495. So, you know, I'd like in the future at some point that we pay $1,500 for 100 wreaths. But this year, all I'm asking is for the 510. But if another councilmember wants to raise that, I'm fine with that, too.
Okay, thank you.
Since we already come before the bridge here, our city managers, there are possibility we can make a more meaningful contribution here, because I believe three of us on the council serving armed force services is something we really value. And it's possible we can come to the $1,500 amount here.
Yes, it's at the discretion of the council.
My, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Voitz.
Yeah, you know, with the other participating donors, the veterans plots at El Toro Memorial may oversee, you know, if we, I think that there's a need for the El Toro Memorial thing, but I just don't know how many veterans are buried there. So the fact that with everybody pitching in, I'm not opposed to giving more, but the fact is, as a need basis, I don't know how much they really need, so.
So, so what they do with these wreaths, and this is the conversation I had with them, is they look at how many veterans are at that cemetery, and they get that many wreaths. But if we pay for more wreaths, like what happened for us, is they brought wreaths from another cemetery and gave, and gave them to us. So if there's, if we pay for our whatever, if it's 100, and there's other donations, then they'll give them to other cemeteries, so these wreaths. And that's how it started. It just, it started snowballing across the country, where they're like, hey, we'll just pay for more wreaths for these, for these fallen soldiers.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Voitz.
Thank you for that. I just was wondering that, you know, do we have a surplus of wreaths? Are we buying too many wreaths for the service members that are laid to rest at El Toro? And to be, I'm happy with the 510, because we beat Mission Viejo for the fact that I think the city of Lake Forest is actually the community of El Toro. And I think that we have a larger and stronger heritage to the United States Marine Corps Air Station El Toro. So I'm happy with any amount that we beat Mission Viejo with, so thank you.
Okay. All right, do I have a motion then for, excuse me, Councilmember you?
I want to make a motion to propose a $1,500 contribution here.
Okay, so we have a $1,500
I can second that unless.
Motion?
Mayor Protem has something.
Mayor Protem Teddermer.
If I could, just under discussion, I'm intrigued. I think it talked about in the staff report that you could identify where you want the dollars to be spent. And I'm curious to know how many veterans are not only at El Toro, but what about Ascension? It's not, I mean, there may be veterans that are at Ascension as well.
There's absolutely veterans there.
Right. And so what my thought was that if we were to work with Ascension and El Toro to say for each of the veterans that are there, that we would provide funding for a wreath for each one of those at those two cemeteries. Now, I say that not knowing what the answer is, so I'm wondering if we could potentially continue yet another item to get that information so we then can understand what it is. But my preference would be that we would provide the $15 for every veteran buried at Ascension or El Toro. Again, that's not a motion, because I don't know what the amount is yet, but if we can ask staff to find that out and come back, and then we can know exactly what we're being asked to consider.
Yeah, okay. And that's, I guess that's something we could ask the people that run wreaths. I don't even know if they go to Ascension. So that, I mean, I know the ceremony was at El Toro, but, you know, I, you know, I'm okay with table in this.
I have a hard time supporting one at one place and not somewhere else. I think it's better that we recognize both.
I agree with you. So I'm okay with table in this.
Yeah, if we can continue it while staff, I presume, can run the ground the number in each. Now, I realize wreaths may not be officially over at Ascension, but I think that can be part of a conversation, too. And we can figure out, and maybe it's a volunteer opportunity if we wanted to take those wreaths to those places at Ascension.
So if you make that motion, I'll second it.
Okay, so the motion is that we will gather data, directing staff, to find out how many veterans are at these two local cemeteries, and then we will table this for the vote on what the dollar amount we will commit to once we receive that data. Okay?
That sounds like a fair summary of my motion.
I was just wondering whether it's worth the cost of the staff time to incur that number and come up with the calculation to, you know, for that a few hundred dollar difference there. But I got the motion here.
It's just two phone calls.
Yeah, sure, then.
Yes. Madam City Manager, can confirm that this will be a relatively simple task to do and relatively little cost or none based with staff time, right? Okay, so we have a motion. Do I have a second? Second? Okay. And we're going to vote on.
That motion passes for one with Councilmember you abstaining.
Okay. All right, moving on to the city manager's report. Madam City Manager, do you have any additional reports or information to present tonight?
Thank you, Mayor. No, I have nothing additional.
Okay, moving on to city council comments. Councilmember Pecano.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Well, I want to, once again, thank staff for the outstanding work, and thank you all for considering this Reefs Across America. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Voitz.
I'd like to thank Councilman Pecano for bringing it forth to us, because it's only right that we honor those that are laid to rest within our city boundaries. So thank you, and have a great week.
Very good. Councilmember you.
Just want to report, I spent last weekend to meet with city manager and the staff for several key issues. First of all, it's a review of city budget. I would just report to the resident here, our city budget's very good, it's healthy. And a lot of time, I would say it looks better inside of who than what it looks from the outside. And also, I went through with the city manager and the staff, went through our city employee compensation program, and we will talk about that later. But I would say, I appreciate that we come up with a very conservative employee compensation program. But at the same time, I hope our employees have, you know, better compensate, as I believe in a very high-cost living area here. And third, as I work with city staff and turn and other regarding the Safe Lake Forest program, and we will continue working on that, and then communicate with respective HOA and other entities to improve that part and enhance the safety and security of our community. And the last thing is, I have met several resident individually who request to set up a city council meeting and help address their individual matter, and I refer the matter to the city staff appropriately, and if needed. And thank you so much for the work of all the city staff here. And by the end of next week, it's gonna be the Lunar New Year celebration. Our city has about 22% Asian-Americans, and the most of them celebrate Lunar New Year. And I just want to say, Happy New Year to who celebrate this holiday. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Teddermer.
Nothing further tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. A couple last things. First of all, thanks, everyone, for attending tonight. We appreciate, you know, your attendance. I want to mention also, tomorrow night is the New Business Chamber of Commerce event that will be here on campus at 6 o'clock. Second, I also want to mention that we have the Snow Fest event that will be on the 28th of this month. And so I have the honor of putting on my slicks and going down the hill and having some fun with the kids. We've got a lot of local churches and whatnot that are volunteering to help with that event, so that should be a fun time for families of all ages. Thank you very much for your attendance tonight. Our meeting is now adjourned.